Good afternoon. It's Thursday, September ninth, two thousand and twenty-one at four oh two P M. And I'll call to order the Free Town Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee meeting. We will be going to executive session and then coming back in an open session subsequently. We will be going into executive session for the following two reasons. Master General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, A one, to discuss the discipline or dismissal of an employee. And Master General Law, Chapter thirty, um, it's Chapter, sorry, yeah, Master General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, A three, discuss strategy with respect to negotiations with public employees, union, local one-one-four-four, Launa Highway Union. Discussion is taking place in executive session because in open session, discussion would have detrimental effect on the negotiation position of the town. So with that, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
You just think I'm late? All seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Grunwald?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. Alright. Alright, now we're back in open session. And we have the Finance Board here, Finance Committee here, so I think we're ready to move forward.
Yeah, um, I thought maybe what we do is just go through the warrant article by article and those that are proposed by the Board of Selectmen, we can ask you questions about them. And then maybe the other ones, we can just have an open discussion of of those. Does that sound good?
Works for me.
Yep. Okay, so the first article is on the stormwater management plan. We didn't have any questions or issues with that as, we haven't voted on anything on these, but we discussed what our questions are. So we didn't have any questions on that.
Yeah, that one seemed pretty straightforward, right?
Yeah. Second one is the, uh...
Excuse me, Gary.
Yeah.
One second. Are we also going to decide what we're gonna put on the flyer as part of this?
That's tomorrow's.
That's tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Okay.
So, um, so the second article is the Board of Health to be elected independent of the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah.
So we did have a bunch of questions on that. I don't know whether we all want to ask our individual questions or how we want to do that.
No, that's up to you, Gary.
Well, I'm, I'm asking whether you would like to ask questions.
That's in our program, yeah.
Well, actually, I have a question, maybe my answer's another one. Is it, and the thrust of this is to do what? The Board of Health to be elected independent of the Board of Selectmen. Are you creating a department? Are you, what are you doing?
No. And so it's just, uh, like, the Board of Health as it sounds, right? So, right now, Jared, right, is the Board of Health as a selectman, right?
Yeah.
Our, the thought on that, at least my thought on that, is we have no special area of expertise in anything that has to do with the Board of Health. It's kind of just, like, just by default, somebody on the Board of Selectmen is the Board of Health. Where we think that the town would be better suited if somebody with some type of, you know, at least one discipline of what the Board of Health is. If that person ran where we elected somebody who was, you know, either like a public health, a public health nurse or a doctor, or maybe engineer, you know, to deal with all the septic Title V stuff, someone, someone that has some kind of background or understanding of what that is. That, that's where that comes from.
So you, you're going to create an elective position?
Yes.
Is that an elective paid position?
It would be a, it's a good question. I think that they, we haven't, I haven't really discussed that. I, I mean, I, I see that being like, like, maybe something's comparable to where the selectmen are paid.
Well, again, my, my question is if you're gonna, if you're gonna have an elected position that's going to be paid, is it going to be a full-time position? Or is it gonna be part-time? And if it's part-time, if it's twenty hours or more, they're eligible for health insurance and all the other benefits. But I, my question is, what, you know, if you're gonna create a position that's elected,
Yeah.
it's, it's gonna, it's gonna be a paid position?
Yeah. Kim, you wanna speak?
I can't see you getting an engineer to work for nothing.
No, yeah.
Okay, you're, you're not really creating an employment position, you're creating a Board of Health.
Yeah.
So an entire three-member board would be elected, and at this point, there's no provision for any type of stipend
Yeah.
that would probably have to be addressed at the annual town meeting.
And that, and that's what...
If this goes forward.
So I think the first is just introducing the concept to the town, right?
Well, I understand, but there's no, I'm not seeing that here. It doesn't say anything about a three-member board or, does it?
It does. It does underneath.
Huh?
It does right underneath the italic.
The second line.
Board of Health. Well, he's looking at that.
That must be missing here.
What is, where does the health agent fit in?
Oh, I'm sorry, it does say three-member board.
Yeah, so the health agent, they still, they're employees of the town, but they, they would report to the Board of Health.
So the Board of Health will oversee the health agent?
Yeah.
The health agent is the one that would go out and oversee?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that, that position's not changing. It's just kind of, you know, they're, rather than them reporting directly to the Board of Selectmen, they would report to the Board of Health. That's my understanding at least. Does that make sense to you, Mike?
Yeah, if that's what you, if you create a separate Board of Health, um, yes, because my understanding is when you have a health agent by statute, they report to the Board of Health and not to the selectman. Right now, they report to you because you are the Board.
Because you are the Board of Health, but, but in, I don't think, a lot of towns do have separate Boards of Health than Board of Selectmen, so.
Right.
So, so what would their responsibilities be? Do they have a responsibility to, uh, to accept a septic system or deny a septic system or?
I mean, I think that if things go to appeal, just like, you have to do on this Board of Health now, you know, it'd be the same kind of thing. The benefit of having somebody elected, who, who, hopefully enough people feel is qualified to actually make those decisions, is rather than, like, I'll tell you for, I was a Board of Health at one point, I have no, you know, you have no idea what, like, I don't know the first thing about septic.
There's a lot of things.
You know? Yeah, but...
I'll give you the flip side to that. If we elect a board, there's nothing here that says they need certain qualifications. So they will not necessarily know any more than the current board.
Yeah.
And, uh, it's really the professionals that report to the board that have the knowledge that's required. From what I've seen, I, I think this is totally redundant.
I, 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 that's my question. My question is, well, other than the fact that, you know, it's a three-member board of people that, if they're elected, it can be anybody.
Of course.
Obviously.
Yeah.
But you mean...
If they're appointed, there may be qualifications. I mean, I, I, honestly, I can't see anybody running for election to be on a Board of Health that reported to another board and that was an unpaid position. I can't imagine anybody doing the job. It just doesn't make any sense.
I guess we'll see.
Yeah, we have nurses and we have doctors that are appointed.
Yeah.
And they're the ones that really are making the hard decisions.
They would make the final, pretty much final decision.
Yeah.
Yeah, but they're, they're being paid, are they not?
Yes.
Oh, well, if they're being paid, they're paid to make decisions.
Yes.
Well...
How does this fit with Article three on a ballot question to appoint a Board of Health? I mean, is this a, just the two, two possible ways of, of solving the problem?
Yeah.
And, um, and which does the board prefer?
I mean, honestly, I'd like to put that up to, to the voters. And the way I look at it, like, I don't think it makes sense right now to have the Board of Selectmen just by default be the Board of Health, right? I think there's a better way to do it. And we're trying to, you know, see, see what the voters think about those other potential solutions.
I could tell you, this goes to the floor. You're gonna have a lot of questions between, between one and three. They're gonna...
Two and three.
Two and three, I'm sorry. They're gonna, uh, you know, they're gonna be asking a question, the same questions, you know.
Yeah, I think they're fair, they're fair questions.
What are you doing? You know, is it, you know, is it two or is it three or, you know?
So what would happen if both Article two and Article three passed?
Yeah, so that's what I'm trying to figure out now.
Right, is it elected or appointed? Yeah, that's the confusion.
Procedurally, if people pass, and you have to inform them of this ahead of time. If they pass Article two, they will not vote on Article three. It becomes moot because they've already decided to have it be elected.
Right.
If they defeat Article two, they then have the opportunity to vote on Article three because they've chosen for it not to be elected. Now they can choose whether it's gonna be appointed or not exist at all, and it would stay the selectman at that point.
Makes sense.
Okay. So, onto Article four. So Article four is the purchase of the Tisdale Pond Dam and the water line.
Yeah.
I think we had a question as to whether there are other costs involved or anticipated other than the purchase price.
We're gonna have to insure that, aren't we?
So, yep.
And we're gonna have to insure the line, aren't we?
I don't know if we have to insure the line. I'm not sure how that, how that works. But I know there's, so most of, the cost of getting it up to code and, you know, is gonna be paid for by Churchill Banks. Now, the actual cost of insuring it, adding it as a, you know, a, one of the town's...
And also, and also maintenance.
Maintenance, yep. But, I mean, we already had to do some of the maintenance.
There will be maintenance down the road, yes.
Say again?
There will be maintenance down the road.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And it's a deteriorating situation. Don't forget that. That's been there. How long has it been there? It's been...
I'm not, I mean, it's been...
That's back when the gas, the gas plant was open, when they first opened the gas plant to put that in.
Yep. No, I, there is definitely gonna be some, some additional costs to that. It's been certified though already, and it's actually, it's in solid shape, so, you know, that's a part of the problem.
No, I'm not saying, yeah.
I, I think that the, the liability we're taking on with that and the extra expenses are greatly, um, are, you know, it's, it's very small dollars compared to the potential benefit of be able to get that culvert down South Main Street and be able to potentially get sewer and other, you know, um, things of that nature down there. So, we, like, it's gonna save us millions of dollars.
Oh, my. I, I'm confused. How is that gonna save us money?
So if we, so we, we wanna, I mean, I personally want to put a sewer line down, down Main Street.
Why?
So then people, first of all, we have, we can actually have businesses and, and houses can tie into the sewer rather than having septic's in every place.
We, we already have businesses down. There isn't any open land except for where the church was.
Well, all, I mean, they're, they're on South Main Street, it's owning?
Yeah.
There's where Kathy's was.
Yeah.
And, I mean, a lot of those places, I'm sure would like to be redeveloped into more modern buildings if they have the ability to. You don't think so?
Uh...
I personally do.
Again, you know, I, 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 I don't know what they want to do, you know, I, I can't speak for the owners of properties, but...
So also, we're gonna have more and more septic stuck failing, is what I've, you know, that's just a thing that happens, right? And it's, it's gonna be difficult to, to get new septic's in those existing places. So I think that sooner or later, we're gonna have to face that.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not disputing that.
Yeah, no. So, and so the biggest part of, of this whole culvert is where that goes underneath the, the twenty-four bridge, right? So that, that's all under, that's like all mass dot D O two, whatever. It's, it's, it's almost impossible for us to actually be able to get a sewer line underneath there without having this culvert to do that. And just that part alone is going to, it costs us millions of dollars.
It's, it's actually, it's, uh, it's right at this particular juncture for some, a, a town like this here, it's fifty-seven thousand dollars a foot to put sewer in.
Yeah, that's very expensive.
I have a brother that's an engineer.
Yeah.
Civil.
Yeah.
That's what he does.
Yeah.
But, you know, you put sewer, and then you gotta build a plant. Unless you're thinking about tapping into...
Yeah, follow river.
Follow river.
Yeah.
Which would be a huge mistake, in my, my opinion.
Well, so this is just the first step in, in, in being able to even figure out if this is, if, if it's feasible, right? But the, I mean, so that's where, that's where...
Well, the, you know, again, this, the dam has nothing to do with sewer.
Well, the dam, so this is the dam, they don't want to own the dam anymore.
Yeah, well...
And they have, they have this culvert that goes all the way through our town, so they're willing to give us the, give us the culvert if we take on responsibility of the dam.
Yeah.
That's what it is.
Okay. Yeah, again, I can, I, I don't have any problem.
Yeah.
With owning the dam, and I don't have any problem with doing the maintenance.
Yeah.
But, you know, this, this, uh, uh, this idea that it's absolutely necessary to put water and sewer down South Main Street is just, you know...
I don't, I, I think it's in the long term, it's kind of thinking ten, fifteen years down the road.
And you may, you may be correct about that, you know, you may be correct about that.
Yeah. That's, 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 that's all I see this, guys.
But it just, as, as time goes on, it gets more and more expensive. You know, you gotta figure, it's gonna be a union job and it's cost plus, so.
No, it's, no, there's, I totally agree. One, one thing is we, we did get a substantial grant that we're, we're able to use to, to do this, so...
Absolutely, yeah.
You know, and this will be a lot of infrastructure money, I think, coming down.
Yeah.
So that might be another way we can kind of offset some of the costs.
Well, it's a very, again, it's a very small stretch of the town, and in the entire rest of the town...
No, I, I, I totally agree.
Yeah.
I totally agree.
Well, again, like I said, I, I personally, I'm just asking about what those, I think it's good to look at the long term and the short term when it comes to stuff like this.
Yeah, this is definitely not like a, a right now thing, but it's just, we need to get this part done to, to even, one step in the right direction, you know?
Well, okay.
So did this article previously say it was a dollar?
Yeah, that was a change that the town council made.
Yes.
And what, so now there's no money involved?
I thought it was a dollar.
It's something that's on the list for the interim town administrator to re-judge with Churchill Banks this week to confirm.
Yeah, I remember, last thing I remember, it was in a dollar. Alright.
Okay, so Article five is design services, project management, and bidding for renovation and remodel of the Council on Aging Building.
Mm-hmm.
So, let's see. So my notes on the questions, um, I, we must have had a question about funding. We were concerned about the estimated total cost of the renovation. And we wanted to know, is this five hundred and fifty thousand in addition to the previously appropriated funding?
Wait, did you speak to this one a little bit? I mean, I know, 'cause I had a similar question too. So it was, or Kim, you might be able to speak to this. I'm not sure if you're familiar with this one. So the five fifty is already there.
The five fifty's already there. That's just to do a renovation, actual construction. That has nothing to do with any of these other functions.
Okay, so it, so it was just, so this is additional money with kind of more flexibility on, on how it can be spent based, so... So I mean, the total cost, now that, is that your next question or your...
Yeah, the...
So the total cost, George, you, I mean, what was it?
One point nine.
One point nine million, I think, is what it was?
Yeah, and the five fifty can be used towards the renovation piece of that.
Yeah.
That was already approved.
Yeah.
And, and funding for that, one point nine million?
One point five, we already have.
Yeah, yeah, one, okay, one point five, one point nine, I'm, one point something.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the funding for that is...
Free cash.
Free cash, yeah.
Okay. What is, what, what is existing free cash?
It hasn't been certified yet, but the estimate is on the sheet that I handed out to you. It's over three million dollars.
Yeah, okay.
So are we okay with that now?
Yeah, kinda. It's five hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a bunch of plans, is that's, that's basically what you're saying.
I think we're gonna have a bid in hand. Want to sit down with this?
Three bids, right?
Well, whatever we need, so we know what's gonna happen, how much it's gonna actually cost.
Yeah.
I think that's a little hard to tell because of materials and all of that.
It's just been going off, like, I remember early on, you were talking to, um, one of the folks who kind of gave the proposal on the different options, and he was like, I honestly can't tell you a price because I could call you today and tomorrow it could be thirty percent difference. How crazy the, the circumstances are, so, you know?
It'd be difficult getting somebody to sign a contract with a, a cost-plus clause.
Yeah, I think that will be...
Possible, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know if anybody wanted to see the design proposed. I got copies here if anybody's interested.
Yeah, I think I'm familiar with them, but yeah, anyone else interested?
Uh, might be ten copies if we're gonna get through that, so.
I think I saw these online.
Oh, okay.
That could very well be. They might have been online, but not everybody gets it.
Yeah. So you, so Ken, tell me, just quickly, what is, what is this, uh, renovation gonna do that this building doesn't do now?
Space.
Huh?
Space for, uh, stuff they do live. I really haven't been here since COVID started.
I thought you were.
I'm not up to date totally.
Yeah.
But simply put, they're gonna go out front twenty feet, the whole seventy across, two floors. And you see, there's more rooms here for things, including an elevator, which is gonna be needed for any kind of, you know, because of the cost of the project. And upstairs, we're gonna have more office space and whatever for different functions.
Place for people to see doctors, potentially, you know, um, tact services.
Yeah, to put the hygienist, tax, uh, all that kind of stuff.
Plus an elevator.
Yeah.
Yeah, the elevator is, uh, I don't know what that itself is gonna cost, but it could be a bit.
A lot.
Yeah, I know they're not cheap.
We, we, our hands are tied with that. If we want to put anything more than, I think it was like, what?
Seven third.
Like, you know, anything over like, I don't know, a small dollar, like a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, maybe a hundred thousand. If we go over there, we gotta get everything up to current ADA, including changing door handles, and we gotta, I think one of those bathrooms over there doesn't meet compliance.
Need a bubbler, like a water bubbler.
Yeah, there's a whole bunch of things that gotta be done throughout the whole building. It's not just the addition.
I, I guess, yeah, but I guess my question still stands. I mean, what is, what is that gonna do that this, this building doesn't afford?
A lot. The answer to your question, Bob, is it's gonna do a lot. The ADA regulations, for instance, they're meant to make it more habitable for the elderly that are handicapped. That's huge. This building is not large enough anymore to accommodate all of the programs that they would like to do. And there's a real need for this.
Yeah. I, I'm just curious about the, the, you know, you're gonna go out that way, right?
Yeah.
And you've got, you've got a tremendous amount of space behind also, correct?
Behind, oh, the land?
Yeah.
Oh, it, yeah.
I mean...
That's high, though.
I understa, yeah, but I understand. Well, that's the whole idea. You, you don't, you don't need the elevators. I mean, you, you can just drive up or...
The thing, it's all like, put any money into it, you almost have to become ADA compliant.
Mandate it.
Yeah.
Is it required to put that?
Bob, you can drive upstairs, but if I'm here right now, I wanna go upstairs, I gotta go up and around.
And that's just not...
No, I, I understand, I understand that one. I'm just saying it wouldn't be, it would be more cost-effective to go out that way there than to go out that way there.
Well, that could be, but the point right now that we're talking about is, do we need this or not?
And the money, what you're telling about is changing all of this stuff, you have to change that anyway, correct? I mean, if you didn't do, if you didn't want to have, uh, more space, you would still have to upgrade all of these things that you're talking about.
I don't think you would until, until you invested some money into the property, but what, what you're gonna have to do anyways in the long term, because things are gonna start falling apart, you know, so, yeah, you're right. At a certain point, sooner or later, it's gotta be done, you know?
Yeah, we get it done one shot, and I think that's pretty much it, but the key is the space you're gonna get downstairs here, couple of big rooms for functions, upstairs, more office space for certain programs they wanna run.
Maybe we could use the police station since we, all of that space over there.
Well, then you gotta, you gotta put the program, you gotta put somewhere else. I know it's...
Honest to God. Yeah, well, you know, I, listen, I'm not trying to...
Yeah, no, I know.
I'm not trying to put the kibosh on anything yet. I'm just asking a question, because, you know, it's the same story that we get every time we wanna build something in town. Oh, wow, you know, we gotta have this, and, you know, we have to have this, and we gotta put fiber optics in, we gotta do this, we gotta do that, I mean, you know? And it's a lot of money. Spend fourteen million dollars over there, and nobody said, hey, maybe we should put solar panels on there and cut down the electricity.
Yeah, wasn't part of that, unfortunately.
Yeah, it's not too late.
No, you're right. Maybe that's something we might wanna put on the...
I'm all about, so, all about it. Yeah.
Okay, uh, so the next, um, uh, next batch of articles from six through twelve are from the town meeting study committee. And I think most of them, we were okay with, um, do, um, the ones that we had questions about. We had a small question on Article six, which would change the lead time for, uh, getting the articles out to the public from seven days to fourteen. And I think Bob asked, why couldn't it be longer, like, maybe twenty days?
Actually, I think the argument that was made, that people's attention span lapsed after fourteen days. I think that that really like, makes a lot of sense.
Okay.
Alright.
I think it does.
Okay, so fourteen's good. So let's see, I think we were okay with seven to ten and twelve. The one concerning the Finance Committee, we're kind of split on, um...
Yeah, personally, I think we should table that article or throw that article, we, we review it again in depth. That's my own personal opinion.
That's okay with me.
Yeah, so we have no problem taking that off.
This is, this is the, uh, wanna table it? Yeah, I mean, I don't...
But we haven't voted on anything.
Yeah.
Yeah, we...
This is all, you know, I don't feel strongly either way on it, to be honest with you, so...
Well...
I would hate to see it appointed, to tell you the truth.
I don't know, Mike, do you have any input on this?
Uh, I mean, we looked at the question. It was the Finance Committee's preference that they be appointed, but we could not really come to a consensus on the manner of doing it. So we just came up with what we thought was the best system, but it, it was not of our origin that they be appointed. It was their preference that they be appointed. If they now wanna take that off, I don't think we would care.
I mean, yeah, I don't, I don't think we care.
Personally, we...
I, I, I think, you know, if we're gonna start appointing people, I think...
I think we need to have a bigger discussion on it, because we did have several discussions on this, and like Mike said, we did want it appointed, so I don't know why we're gonna back off of that now.
If it's gonna be appointed, it should be by the Finance Committee. Name should be submitted to the chairman. The chairman should come before us with the names, and we should have a discussion. And if we have to, we could have interviews or what, however, however you wanted to do that, that would be fine, but...
So you know, against, nobody's against the appointment. It's the way it's getting appointed, is how I understand it?
That's correct.
That, that's where we, we had our discussions.
I mean, it really is a pain in the ass to get forty signatures.
Right, but you have to get it somewhere in order to make it...
No, I got that. I got that, yes.
Well, on, on the other hand, you know, if you're, if you're willing to go out and get forty signatures to get elected to a post that's not gonna pay you anything, then you'll have, you, obviously, you wanna be on that, that committee. You have a real desire to be on the committee. If you just get appointed willy-nilly, you're not gonna have the same caliber of people with the same, that's the same, uh, uh, amount of enthusiasm to be on the committee or the enthusiasm to do the right thing for the voters of the town. I mean, that, that's, that's my own personal opinion. The other, on the other hand, I think that forty signatures is ludicrous. I think maybe twenty signatures, okay, fine, twenty signatures, I can see. But, you know, none of us wanna stand in front of juniors trying to get forty goddamn signatures.
That's my point. I'm happy to serve the town, I'm happy to serve the committee, I don't wanna do the work.
It's state law.
As the state statute. State statute, I thought.
Yeah, yeah, it's based on the turnout for the most recent gubernatorial election.
So the trick is to get our nobody to vote for governor than the number one candidate.
I don't think that's a stretch.
Shortest special legis, that would be the only other thing you could do, is try to file special legislation to change the number to a set number here.
Well, I can tell you to give you my opinion, that's all it is, is I was on the Finance Committee for many years. We always managed to get signatures.
Yeah.
And to your point, I think you're right on target. People who want to be on there, put out that extra effort, and you only do it once every three years, not a big deal. And, uh, to just appoint people to this committee, I, I, I think would be wrong.
Yeah, I, I don't think it would, I, I don't think it would, in the spirit of the Finance Committee, what we're, what we're tasked to do is for the, for the community, I don't think that, that it would be the best benefit to the committee to be appointed. That's my own personal opinion.
Well, we're just... You were talking about somebody getting appointed willy-nilly. Well, I think if it's between the Finance Committee, we're gonna have a better thought as to who we'd wanna work with. To figure they got some background and somehow would be more benefit than just, uh, just somebody coming in off the street.
And I think when we supported this initially, the thought was that, um, that the Finance Committee itself would, uh... that the finance committee itself would, uh, propose names to the appointing committee.
Yep.
And then the appointing committee would have to choose from those names. Uh, the way it's written now, it just leaves the appointing committee with freedom to appoint whoever they want.
I don't have any enthusiasm for that whatsoever. I, I just don't, uh, I just don't. I think, again. I think the system that we have works well because the people that wanna be in the committee, and let's face it, you know, we've had problems, uh, right along, getting people to participate on the finance committee. So, getting people, getting people, uh, on the committee as write-ins has never been a problem. Anybody that's had the, uh, you know, you get five people and you can get on the committee, I mean, if you really want to. But I think if you, if, if, if you do away with that, and it becomes appointed, and there's something else involved there, I mean, there could always be some agenda that somebody has.
They have an agenda, people running to get elected as well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's fixing one half dozen on the other, as far as people's action.
But there's a major difference here. At least, when you're an elected official, the voters have an opportunity.
Right.
To vote you in or out.
That's correct.
But most people don't campaign, they don't know anything about you. They go to the ballot, and you're the only one on there, and they check the box.
But they still have the opportunity.
They have the opportunity.
Obviously, they do that for president, too.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, one, one reason that we supported this, I think, was that it would offer the opportunity to change the cycle of the term of office, so that it would coincide with the fiscal year, which is very helpful in terms of, uh, the budget process.
Now, I, again, I, I don't think that that's, that, that, I don't, I understand your point, but I don't think that that's a big consideration there. What the consideration is, is either, you're gonna take the decision of the, of the members of the committee out of the hands of the committee, which I think is ludicrous, and, uh, and put it into somebody else's hand, either in the short run or long run, as far as being appointed by, and being approved by someone else. I think that that's, you know, that's the reason we have a committee that's autonomous. We, we really need to be in the say here.
And I think autonomous is the correct way to say that. It's an important issue for your committee.
Yeah.
And, yeah, by the way, just to make sure we're on the same page, so it would be, the appointing committee would be, what, the moderator, board of selectmen, one, uh, chairman of the board of selectmen, and then the chairman of the finance committee.
Yeah.
Right? So, there is just a, you know, I, I honestly don't feel strongly either way, but, you know.
That, that was a compromise born of, nobody really wanted to be the one to do the appointing.
Yeah. I never asked for it, to be clear, right?
No, but, but, but Cheryl wouldn't take it, so you guys stuck it instead.
Well, I, I, I think, I still think we should pull the article.
Yeah.
There's, there's gonna be other meetings. If we can come up with something that we can all agree on, and that we think will work.
Yeah.
Better, that's fine, but I think for now, that article should be pulled. That's my opinion.
Yeah, that's fine with me. Does anyone vote maybe on that now? I don't think so, right?
Well, let's, I didn't, on the agenda, I didn't say anything about voting on things.
Yeah, so, no, it's fine. So, so, so I don't, yeah, I don't think we have to vote it. It's just a discussion.
You make that decision. When we vote, we'll vote on the thing.
Yeah.
All right, so I think we should move on, right?
Yeah.
Or moving. As, as selectmen, you can vote to just take it off the warrant altogether.
Yeah.
The, the finance committee doesn't have a say in whether it's on the agenda. If, if you leave it on the warrant, they can make a recommendation. If you guys wanna kill it now, you can just vote to take it off of there now. That, that's, at that point, that's up to you guys to do that.
I mean.
Personally, I, again, not only because I was in the finance committee for so many years, I, I feel relatively strongly that it should stay elected position.
All right, so I'll, I'll extend a motion to remove Article eleven from the warrant. I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, there we go.
Okay, um.
We could, I mean, if something happens to be now and then, we could potentially change it, add it back, if there's a new idea that comes out, hypothetically, right, so.
There's, there are more meetings to come up.
Yeah.
We can get it on the warrant anytime we want.
It's not dead forever.
Okay, so, um, so I guess we're okay with all the other, uh, uh, town meeting study committee?
Where are we at? Twelve, right?
Well, this, this is the bylaw committee.
That was eleven. Twelve is, uh, establishing a permanent bylaw review committee.
Yeah.
I think it makes sense.
How many people are on that committee?
Mike?
Uh, let's count. One, two, three, four, five, six.
Mine, mine, twelve.
Nine, I think. I'm coming up with nine.
Oh, yeah, mine's off.
Are these, are these people all town employees, or is it a hodgepodge?
It, it clearly identifies who is part of this in the article.
Yeah. Moderator, town clerk.
Which, where are you reading?
Article twelve.
Okay.
Second law.
Oh, see, mo- mo- article of town clerk, the designee? A member of the board of selectmen, and a member of the finance committee. Who is on the, who is the?
Kent is.
Kent is.
Oh, no, Kent is, no, Christine is. Christine is our, our representative.
The previous committee was specifically geared toward town meeting. One of its recommendations was that the other bylaws need attention also, so they proposed this permanent committee that would look at everything else.
Maybe it's time we did look at them.
And we wouldn't necessarily need a finance person. We could probably cut your nine back to six, or seven, I should say, or.
Yeah, but the moderator was happy not to be on any.
No, you're the head. You know, something like that, and we'll draw people in if we're worried about their department. You know, they can come and sit in for a couple of meetings and have their say, whatever, and that's how I visualize it. So, I think your nine people could easily be pruned, and we can leave that to once the committee is swarmed, if you want.
Unless you'd rather.
Not, not the way.
That's not the way it's written.
Okay. But the, I would say at this point, 'cause the article was submitted.
Yep.
Between the selectmen, or maybe more particularly the finance committee, if you recommend a different, smaller amount of numbers, that can be offered at the meeting as an amendment. Okay.
Yeah, it can be offered, but I, I don't think that's a small number. I mean, I think we're, a committee like this, the more, the more the merrier. And the more varied, the more varied the experience within the municipal, uh, system, the better off you are.
If you wanna go up to twelve, you could change it to two residents from each precinct instead of one. That would give you twelve instead of nine.
Yeah, yeah. Again, like I said, it just, I think the more the merrier. Instead of cutting down, you should have as many as you possibly get.
As long as it can achieve a quorum, I don't care how many people.
Well, it's a matter of getting enough people that are interested.
Yeah.
Well, that's the whole idea.
In this town, sometimes you don't get that.
If, if you left it at nine, the quorum would be five. If you changed it to twelve, the quorum would be seven, so it's.
I think nine's a good number.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. Maybe we wanna change one or two of the nine to something else, but I don't know.
No.
They're talking about establishing bylaw.
We don't wanna make a two.
Yeah, I think it might be.
Where are we at? Twelve? No, thirteen?
Thirteen. Thirteen is the purchase of a new riding lawnmower for the highway department.
Yeah, any questions there?
I think Bob had a question.
Yeah, actually, I checked, and I checked, oh, that number is a pretty good number. We're, we're actually getting a pretty good deal there.
Okay. Your, your other question was, how old is the old one?
Yeah, well.
But that's a question.
How old is he old?
That's a question for Chuck.
Yeah, I, I, I did, I remember saying something, I got nature to Chuck, I asked him, and he said, it's very old.
Yeah.
Felt hard, so.
Yeah. Well, it's not like it's not used.
Yeah.
Okay, um, fourteen through eighteen are the funding of the first year of the union contracts.
Yeah.
So, I guess the only one that we have a figure on so far is the firefighters.
Yeah.
Uh, the other ones are not settled yet, or?
Yeah, they, they should be settled soon, but, you know, we're, I, the only one I negotiated was the firefighters, so we got that one done. And then I also police, we're not close without, um, because they're going to go arbitration, so, and then, you know, the other ones are all.
Dispatch and highway are with the union now to just, um, sign off on it, so those should be hopefully.
Yeah.
Close. And admin, we have a meeting at the end of the month, so I don't.
Yeah.
We seem a little hard right now.
Different stages of, kind of, of, uh, negotiation.
So, all of those contracts are gonna be available to the public, correct?
Yeah, right.
It's public record.
Yeah, public record, yeah.
Oh, boy.
It's a fun light reading, actually.
Okay. Any other questions on that?
Uh, not really.
Okay. Article nineteen is supplemental department expense budgets. Uh, that was the insurance and the, uh, transportation to Bristol Plymouth. I think we didn't have any questions on that. Uh, Article twenty, um, we did have a question. Uh, that's the, uh, supplementing the personnel budgets for raises in five departments. And the explanation mentions a, um, two percent COLA for the confidential secretary.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, now that would appear in the police chief's budget, is that right?
Uh, that ended up not being requested.
Oh, okay, but it's still in the explanation.
Uh, yep, it is, so that should be corrected.
Okay. So, did we have any other issues on that?
Well, the, the, the police and fire accidental insurance is fifty-six hundred dollars more. What's the total cost of that?
Oh, we're back to Article nineteen now? Okay.
Yeah, actually.
I can get that information for you. I'll email it to the chair.
That's, that's fine, I'm just curious. But it, it's, that ac- accidental insurance is just that the police station? Just covers the police station?
Wait, where, where are you getting the police station from?
Article nineteen.
Okay, so the amount for the fire, police and fire accidental, uh, the premium is fifty-five thousand eight oh two. That covers the police officers and firefighters.
Could, could you say that one more time, please?
The amount of the expenditure is fifty-five thousand eight oh two.
Okay, fifty-five thousand, sorry, I didn't hear it.
Yep. And that's just for the police and fire personnel.
Okay. That's, that's just for the personnel? Has nothing to do with the buildings or?
No, no, it's for the people.
Just for people?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Um, Article twenty-one is a zoning bylaw change to allow a veteran, veterinary office in the village business district by a special permit. Uh, we were okay with that.
Actually, I do have a question about that. Uh, does the bylaw specifically prohibit veterinary, a veterinary, uh, office in the business district?
Currently, yes.
In the village business district, yes. That's the top line that's got the strike through. Under village business, it's a no, it's not permitted at all right now.
Okay, I think.
I got a question. When they're talking animal sales, are we talking just small animals, or or could they have a cattle auction, for example, or something crazy like that?
I'm not sure. I talked to the planning board about that, I'm not sure. Good question.
I, I, I think there should be a restriction on the kind of animals you're talking, you know, if you're talking cats, dogs. Small stuff, that's one thing. You're talking big stuff.
Or snakes, I just don't like snakes.
Well, typically, large animals do not go to the veterinarian's office to vet goes to the animal.
Yeah.
Yeah, they do, but.
Yeah, but the way it's phrased.
Could be the same vet coming to see you for your horse, as opposed, you know, however.
However, yeah, okay.
I think I'd like to have it worded slightly different.
Okay, Article twenty-two is, uh,
Measure of wood, bark, and lumber.
Yeah.
So, what, what is it, what, what is the town going into business for? Are we going into business for lumber or bark?
We're, we're bark, we're bringing the bark right now. No.
And none, and none of this is covered by the tree warden?
So, Mike, you wanna explain this one? This is a.
Me- measure of wood and bark is a distinct, uh, position that exists under mass general law. It's one of those three hundred year old ones. We have traditionally had two, uh, because we do still have sawmills and lumber yards in town. One passed away and had not been replaced, and a question was raised about whether we were supposed to have one or two, or how many we were actually supposed to have. And it turned out that the town is required to vote to designate the number, and we have never actually done that. We have just had varying numbers over the years for no apparent reason. So, this, uh, really is just trying to settle how many there will be. If it'll be one, two, five, a hundred. They don't get paid, and I think, uh, Ralph Gurney had told me he was the measure of wood and lumber for, I think, fifty-four years or something like that, and he had never once been asked to actually measure any wood or lumber in that capacity. But you still, um, it's just one of those colonial things, that if you think somebody shortchanged you on your firewood by half an inch, that.
You can call this, send, send the person down to measure the wood.
It's like having a fence viewer that never actually uses fence.
So, that, that has nothing to do with anything, uh, like storm damage or, or anything like that, clearing the roads?
No.
Doesn't have anything to do with that?
No.
Now, I'm, I'm confused, though, because it sounds like the people who are being appointed would be selectmen.
No, 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 the, uh, the board of selectmen would appoint the measure of wood. And like, as Mike, Mike told us before, like, sometimes it's just kind of a traditional thing, like, the oldest person in town will be appointed the measure of wood.
I, I think, I think Gary's right. I think if you read this.
Just the way it reads.
To see if the town will approve having two board of selectmen appointed.
Oh, yeah, you're right, you're right.
Measure of wood, bark, and lumber.
No, you're right. Yeah, I.
So, Trevor, you, you and, and, uh, George, you're the only two who are here, so.
I'm okay with being.
Who's worth new spark?
Do you have a tape measure? I'm gonna need it.
Yeah, so, I, I mean, you're right. I think we talked about a couple different ways. I, I misread that. It sounds like the board of selectmen would be the measure of wood.
Yeah.
Totally okay with me, we can measure all the wood. Yeah. Start it. Long time, I should have it wrong.
So, you'll, uh, change the wording on that, you think, or?
Yeah, I mean, either change the wording, or we could just have the board of selectmen be two members just who measure wood. I don't think it really matters. It, it's a totally archaic position that's never gonna be used anyways, so.
We take it a call, though, from the daughter of one, the man who's doing the position now, concerned that we were going to replace him, because he's been doing it since the Saturday. We said, no, that's me here, really.
That's, yeah, that, that's, that, that can get sensitive.
It was important.
No, that can get sensitive.
Yeah.
And you, you may wanna talk to council about that and make sure it's written properly. So, Article twenty-three is a salary increase for the highway surveyor.
Is that contractual?
No.
He's elected official.
He's elected, it's not contractual.
I, I, I just, so he's elected, and he's getting a.
He's asking for a.
Yeah, he's asking for a fourteen sixty-four increase?
Yes.
Two percent, like, all the influence.
No, I, I just monitor.
Okay, so, the next one is from the highway surveyor and fire chief for, uh, twenty-eight thousand dollars for three Conex storage boxes.
And it's saying that the old ones are past their prime?
Apparently, there's like holes in them.
Huh?
There's like a bunch of holes, like, it, it can't be used anymore, really.
Yeah, okay. Well, I get my, I'm just questioning, are they maintained in any way, or are they just?
Just sitting there.
Left to their devices of nature?
I, I, I'm not sure if they're maintained, but I, I know they have big holes in them now. That's all I know.
They were predominantly repurposed box trailers.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I think they're just. I'm not sure they actually still exist anymore, they may have been scrapped at this point.
Yeah.
Well, whatever. Twenty-eight thousand dollars for three is a lot of money.
Apparently, the price of those has gone crazy, those containers in the last couple, you know, since the pandemic.
I can I can give you names of fifteen places that have Conex boxes on sale.
Oh, really? Yep.
That will deliver, I mean, yeah. Whatever. Maybe these are they special Conex?
I I'm not sure, that's the highways where you have to.
Oh, I'm just wondering if they're not, they're not uh like, like air controlled boxes, I don't.
I don't think so.
Yeah, actually, there is a lot, my neighbor just purchased one for three thousand.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if it's the exact same.
That's a smaller size, though.
It's a trailer truck type box.
Yeah, yeah, they come in in twenty foot and forty foot sizes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, this is forty foot for eight thousand.
Well, still. There's a there's a big difference in these boxes, I mean, if you're talking about storage boxes that have double doors, that have uh a ten foot, they have eight foot ceilings, they have ten foot ceilings. And if you have a ten foot ceiling, it's a forty-five footer. That's the longest you can put on a trailer.
To bring it in.
To transport, and the widest it can be is eight feet, so you go forty-five by eight, but still, you got ten feet, so if you put shelves in there, the storage is incredible. But that's, I'm just wondering, but the. What are they storing in them anyway?
No idea.
Yeah, but I just.
Supplies and equipment.
So which cause the the police storage, I can understand that, because they're liable to keep records, I think for twelve years or fifteen years, or something like that, their their records, especially evidence records, you know, but this stuff, I guess.
The wooden fire department need some similar kind of records for a period?
Yeah. Well, I'm just I'm just wondering, instead of, but I'm just wondering, this, you know, would it be cost effective to build a permanent structure for all of this stuff?
Yeah, I know, I know, I'm just thinking about.
Well, do you want to wait till we find out what this is?
I I'm just curious.
Um, apparently, there's also the option of renting these, I don't know what that would cost.
Yeah, that's like, that's not, you don't wanna go there.
An ever ending build, yeah.
Yeah, it's like forever.
Okay, so Article twenty-five is transferring a parcel of land from the board of selectmen to the conservation commission. That's um.
Conservation commission submitted that.
Yeah, um, so that would help preserve and protect land on Long Pond.
So this this isn't gonna be, this land isn't gonna go up for auction, is it?
No.
Yeah, no, I think so.
It's gonna be given to uh conservation with that?
Yeah.
Well.
That's what it says.
Yeah, yeah, um.
To conservation commission.
I understand that, but my question is, is it gonna, is it going to go up for auction? Tax title, tax title usually goes up for auction.
But once transferred.
No, that's how they got it.
Yeah, I think we have it in tax title right now, by understanding this correctly, instead of us putting it for auction, we're gonna give it to the con- conservation commission to protect it, so that it can't be.
Okay.
That's my understanding of this.
That's fine.
Uh, twenty-six is amendment of the zoning map, um. So. Um. Article seeks to rezone to open space and recreation, certain parcels of land acquired by the conservation commission, Department of Conservation and Recreation or like entities. Also to make other minor amendments to reflect actual uses of certain properties, and more significant amendments to reduce the potential environmental and or safety impacts of possible future development or redevelopment. Do we know any specifics about this, or, I mean, it says that there's a map on file with the town clerk, is anybody familiar with that?
No, no, as a matter of fact, I haven't seen.
I'm I'm not specifically familiar with this.
How many parcels are we talking about?
Mike, are you familiar with this?
Um, I am familiar with some of it, they have not finalized a couple of them yet, uh, because they they don't have to until it's time to actually post the warrant. But you're looking at, um, there are some parcels off of Howland Road that did a DCR purchase to expand the state forest that are currently zoned general use. They're not ever going to be developed, so conservation likes to keep the map updated so that potential developers or investors are not looking at the town and thinking there are large swaths of land they can develop when they can't. And there were a few others, um, I know some of the ones that were not conservation specific, there were some properties that just in the past, when the zoning map has been updated, have been overlooked for one reason or another. There's one, for example, down near the four corners that's oddly split between village residential and village business, and I think they're trying to settle it into one category or the other, because it's, one zone allows something, one zone doesn't, and this tiny parcel of land is in both zones, so, um.
Right on the corner, you mean?
No, no, this is, um, actually, right along the river, there's a piece of, across the street from the gas station and right along the river where the chain is across the driveway. The part that is closest to the road, if I'm not mistaken, is zoned village business. But the remainder of that parcel stretching a a hundred or so feet down the river is zoned village residential, and it's it's just an odd. It it would lend you to believe you might be able to put some type of business there when you really couldn't, because the majority of it's residential, and it's it's just an odd split, the one that's right on the corner is uh village business entirely, I believe, that that one's not split. Um, there's a piece of property the Fall River Water Department picked up that would be an open space. This one that uh the previous article about transferring the eight and a half acres over by the boat ramp to the conservation, that would go to open space if it were. Uh, Copart has now recorded its conservation restrictions, so typically, the portions of properties that are under conservation restrictions are likewise rezoned, so that it's evident when you look at the map that that area can't be developed, so it's from predominantly things of that nature. I know they are looking a little bit at, um, all of the properties on Narrows Road that are owned by Crystal Springs are currently zoned general use. I don't know that those will end up on this list, but the conservation commission at least wants to discuss with the planning board whether it's really ro- wise that several dozen acres of land on a narrow road by the river has the potential, if Crystal Springs ever in the future were to close, to be redeveloped so unrestricted as general use.
Yeah, that's a good point, I never thought of that.
So that that's one of the things that's on there, 'cause, I mean, if Crystal Springs were re- ever redeveloped and it was housing, I don't think anybody would be too concerned, but right now, you could.
Put a industrial stuff, you can do anything, a factory.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, you could have a pharmacy and a strip mall and everything else on, and Narrows Road is just not suitable for that kind of developments.
Yeah.
So that's one, those may not be on this list right now, but they're opening that discussion with the planning board, and that's why the list is not. I would imagine by the end of the month, it would be settled, because it has to be settled by the time the warrant is posted.
Is there any cost to us for doing that, or have you got people, employees?
Only the cost of the planning board uh employee, when he updates the map, his time and everything.
Right, so that's who's gonna do it, okay, good.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, so next, twenty-seven, uh, is the water and sewer enterprise supplement to the general fund. Uh, that's the, that's just the standard thing of of giving them permission to uh, to reimburse the general fund for their uh their indirect costs, is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Um.
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight is, yeah, that's a big one.
It's a hot, hot, hot issue.
Yeah, okay, so that's uh ending the enterprise fund. Um. So, did, oh, first of all, there's a typo in in that, um, in the heading, it says becoming at town department instead of a.
Yep. So I mean, you guys are familiar with this, right, everyone familiar with this, so I don't have a strong, are you familiar with what this article is all about? It's going from a.
Which article?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, the uh water and sewer becoming a town department as opposed to.
Actually, I I I haven't, I haven't researched enough of it.
Yeah.
But this has been coming down the pipe.
Yep.
For about seven years.
Yep, yeah.
But I, again, you're gonna set up a department?
Well, they.
And how many employees are gonna be in the department?
Aren't they already a department?
Yes, they are, they are a department.
No, that, it's an enterprise fund.
They are a department. They are accounted for as an enterprise fund, but they are a town department.
Right, but this this will change them, so that they are fully funded from, oh, I'm, fully funded is the wrong way to put it, uh. The currently, it's run as a business, probably the best way to put it. So you have income, I'm sorry, you have revenue, that is what is being billed to their water and sewer customers. And they have to run their business based on that revenue. If you change this, it'll allow them to subsidize the water and sewage department from the general fund. Is that accurate, Kim?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Oh, everybody's saying no.
No, he's just, I can kind of read it, read, read what he said, so, Kim, it's just that, instead of the water sewer department being run as, you know, having their own revenue expenses and, you know, it it, they're independent kind of, like, from an accounting perspective.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Yep.
Now, they will just be part of the general fund, and they'll get, you know, money allocated to them.
Uh, well, actually, that's what Mike was just mentioning, apparently, there is special legislation from nineteen seventy-nine that does allow them to be a revolving fund, so I'm not sure they will be part of the general fund.
Okay.
Oh, when you say revolving fund, oh, I mean, what they're trying to do is have some subsidies from the town to run the sewer and water department, because the revenue is not enough to do what they want to do, and the cost to the individual taxpayers might be too high, is that a correct statement, Kim?
They have the ability to generate as much revenue as they need to cover all of their costs.
By billing? By billing?
By billing, however, if the uh rates are not adequate, then there would have to be a general fund subsidy from the taxpayers to cover that deficit.
That's the way it is now?
Yep.
That's the way that it is now.
If it becomes a town department, then that changes, correct?
They would not be assessed for the indirect costs, and you would lose the mechanism for tracking indirect costs, and um, you wouldn't be setting a budget per se like you are now, that has to have the revenue that matches up.
You could just.
Well, if it, again, if it goes to a revolving fund, i- it's gonna be a whole different, a whole different game, 'cause it's not even gonna be part of the general fund. So I'm not even sure how that is all gonna work, because typically, revolving funds, um, you know, they have to generate more money than their expenses.
Right.
Right.
Or they won't, they won't survive, so.
But going by what the water commissioners themselves have said, is the way, at least my interpretation, is that the cost to the consumer for sewer and water now, or what they're projecting in the future, is is actually too high. So by becoming a town department, it can be subsidized to bring the rates down for individual homeowners.
But they can still be subsidized at this point, even as an enterprise fund, it's all based on how the operating budget is voted at town meeting.
All right, then, explain to us what the benefit is of making this change.
I am not in favor of making this change, so there is no benefit.
There is, there isn't any benefit, and let me ask you a question, the rest of the town, everybody in the town that's invested hundreds of millions of dollars at the septic systems and wells are not gonna benefit from any of this, it's just gonna be a burden on the taxpayer.
No. That's correct.
Why change it?
Well, that's.
There's no accountability.
No, well, I don't know about that, but there's no benefit to the taxpayers that are not on the water or sewer.
Yeah, and I and I think that the water sewer commissioner, what what we heard, it's more of like a what if something catastrophic happens to the system?
True.
Right, then, I think the counterargument to that is, oh, so they wouldn't be up to it before, straight up, right, but the counterargument to that is, well, the town has to subsidize it anyways. Right, like, if we can't just have six hundred folks without water, that's just impossible, you know, I mean, if you if you can't.
Well, I mean, well, I, again, I'm I'm, it's unclear to me, by catastrophic, what do you mean, like a nuclear attack or?
No, I'm just saying, if if there's like a severe damage to, you know, to one of the water lines, we have uh something, you know, blows up, you know, it could happen, right, and a lot of these people, which I think is another fair point, is most people who have city or town water, it's not because of choice of their own. It's because, like, on the Bay Shores, for example, after Hurricane Bob, everybody had, the sewers were all destroyed, or sorry, the um, well, wells were all destroyed, so you had to get, you had to do something, right, and and other places in town, a similar situation, where there's been contaminations with oil spills and things of that nature. So it's not like people want to pay for water every month, it's, they kind of have to, you know.
Well, you know, they have the.
The question I would have for Kim is, in case of catastrophic whatever, uh, wouldn't it, is it unreasonable to ask, couldn't the water commissioners go up for a bond? Let's say we needed.
Only the town can go up for a bond.
No.
Or the water commissioner could never borrow?
No.
They could never borrow for a project?
No, only the town can do that.
That's to be voted at town meeting, does it not?
Yes, it does, but only the town can go out for debt, the water can, the water enterprise fund is not an independent entity, they cannot get their own debt.
Okay, so if that's the case, then if we have a catastrophic event, like Trevor mentioned, the water commissioner would be dead in the water, so to speak.
Not really, I mean, if you had had a catastrophic event, judge, I mean, what about the state and the federal government, isn't that what they're for? If we have a catastrophic event, aren't they supposed to be helping us?
I would think so, but I don't.
Duh.
Okay.
I mean, yeah, I'm I'm not sure how that would go down, I'm sure, hopefully, we would get some, you know, emergency assistance, but I don't know. That, and I'm just saying, I I don't have a strong opinion on this, either way, I I think both, I think Kim makes a lot of good points, I understand where the water shooters come from. I just think that the town, you know, it should be, it's gonna be a thing of lengthy discussion on this, this this will be one, I think, that will probably a lot of people have a lot of questions on. I don't know if we uh front load it as as an early article, or put it at the end, or what do you guys wanna do about that, but.
Oh, I think I would front load it, really? This is a needling uh meeting, right?
Yep.
Like, that's a real good point you brought up, I would front load this.
The only thing about that is, I mean, we've talked about front loading all the financial stuff.
Yeah.
Just so we can get all the finance stuff done, so, just in case this goes on, say we have to extend the meeting to a different night potentially, if it's gonna be, if it's, you know, midnight, we're still going hypothetically.
True, true.
So maybe we wanna have all the finance stuff, and then this be the first non- non-financial one?
Well, there is a financial one, at the end of the day.
It, well, it's not, it's it's not a direct financial one, right, it's not.
They're called the last of the financial ones, and what you're trying to get to, rather than call it the not first on.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, 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 that makes sense, yep.
Um. Well, I'm in favor of moving it forward, it's a little bit.
Yeah. I mean, I'm I'm up with the suggestions.
I think, again, the the timing of it is because in order to set the tax rate on time, the appropriations have to be done first, so what, I think what Trevor's going toward now is, if this were the very first article, and it took three hours to get through it, and people decided to continue the meeting, that's delaying all the other financial decisions to another day and time, if you knock all the.
So?
Eleven thousand, well, you know, the ones of us that are doing this for a living during the day need those to get done on time, that's that's the so.
So, so can we.
So if you do the smaller things, the lawn mowers and things like that first, then this, then everything else.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's, you always have the answer, Mike.
Well, it's submitted by, it's, it is submitted by the water and sewer commission.
Yeah.
So actually, as selectmen, you could actually not allow that on even on there.
Yeah, we talked about this, and, you know, I, we voted to to let it on there, just let the town kind of debate it, it's, I think it's gonna be messy, but, I mean, I personally don't have a strong opinion on it, I wa- I wanna hear other people think about it, though.
I mean, there's a split there, could, I I would think that anyone on the water system or sewer system would be in favor of this.
Oh, yeah.
And maybe people who are not. And maybe people who are not, might not be, but it would have to be voted on, and majority rules, that's all, that's the way it goes.
Yeah. Yep. All right.
Okay.
So where would you like it?
I'd like it to be the, the last of the finances.
Okay, so.
See if this works next time, you know, I'll learn from next one, maybe it's a horrible idea, I don't know, you know.
Uh, so Article twenty nine comes from the Board of Assessors, um, to supplement the Board of Assessors and health insurance budgets. Um, for the purpose of increasing the hours of the part-time clerical position from fifteen to twenty. Um, and allocating thirty-two, hundred and thirty-five dollars to the budget. Uh, for the assessors and eighty-five hundred and fifty dollars to the budget for health insurance. Um.
I, I actually have a question, you're allocating, uh. Twelve, approximately twelve thousand dollars, wouldn't it be, uh, wouldn't it behoove us to hire two part-time people? For fifteen hours? And get thirty hours instead of twenty hours, and then we wouldn't be on the, uh, we wouldn't be liable for health insurance.
Yep.
In retirement.
In retirement.
I think the problem, though.
And longevity, and everything else, that's.
It, I think it's been difficult for them to attract people who are willing to work for fifteen, fifteen hours a week with no benefits. So I think that's the problem, that, that's the reason why they wanna increase it, make it a benefit job, you might get a wide range of candidates. I mean, it's hard to get any help right now to do anything.
They're actual, they're end in ten, um, Conservation Commission has not had a clerk for several months, and they've been unable to, because. To, exactly what Trevor said, they haven't been able to attract candidates for the number of hours they offer and, and the pay and the benefits. So the Conservation Commission and the assessors have agreed to try and hire one person to do both jobs. The result is that the assessors would need the additional money to provide the extra few hours. And really, the two boards together need the health insurance money, but the assessors are the ones who submitted the article.
Yeah.
So that, for better or for worse, right or wrong, that's the direction they're going, and is trying to hire one person to do two jobs.
Yeah.
Just pay more by the hour.
They are union positions, so they can't do that without increasing everybody else who's in the same category.
Oh, gotcha, babe.
Board of Assessors is a union position?
I am a union position, and the part-time clerk would be a union position also, yes.
Okay, I know that, you learned something, that'd be good. Okay.
Okay, um.
What's the funding source for that?
I don't know.
It's coming out of tax levy, would be my recommendation.
Uh, so Article thirty is replacing the shed for the cemetery, um, and Bob, I think you were asking how big the.
How much is?
Oh, it was, what was it?
Nine thousand nine hundred and forty-five, oh, sorry, how much is that?
Ninety-nine forty-five.
Oh, ninety-nine forty-five, thank you.
Nine thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars?
Yeah.
Is it a built shed, or is it prefab?
Uh, it is East Coast Shed in Berkeley is who gave us the quote, I don't know how they actually put it together, I think they build it. I think they build it at their location and then truck it over and flop it on our foundation.
How big is it?
Uh, I don't have the quote in front of me, I believe that it is twelve by twelve, or twelve by fourteen. Uh, we initially intended to repair the shed that we already have, but the building department has determined it's beyond repair and it must be taken down.
Any other questions?
I'm gonna push it.
Okay.
That funding source too. I would recommend not come out of free cash.
Okay, thirty-one is to abolish the farm animal excise tax. Any issues with that? Article thirty-two, air conditioning at town hall, um, can we have any idea how much that might cost?
George, have you gotten close to that yet? I know this was, I think, article you brought up, air conditioning?
I just brought it up, I have no idea what the cost would be.
How much is it costing us now?
We just have window units, so.
I know.
It's a part of electricity.
Don't work.
Yeah, that's the problem, is they.
Uh, does anyone know what a mini duct, uh, air conditioning system goes for?
Oh.
They've gone up, a couple of years ago, it was like thirty-five hundred a piece.
A piece.
But they've gone up.
All right, so let's say it's four thousand, and I don't know how many units we would need. Like, four, five?
How many? You got three floors there, Judge.
Yeah, we have one for this, uh, two for this room, right?
COA should have a idea with these costs.
I'll bet you couldn't get away without, without twelve to fifteen units. To cover the space, don't forget you got corridors.
Yeah, it's huge.
When you have the air units, when, when you've got the window units going, the, the doors to the corridors, the corridors are not air conditioned.
Yeah.
It's just the rooms that are air conditioned.
You know, rather than guests tonight, why don't we get the building commissioner to give us a number?
Yeah?
Yep.
Uh, let's.
You have eleven different offices in the building, so not, not counting the hallways, you'd have eleven different offices that. Would want whatever temperature it is that they're comfortable with, actually twelve, because I didn't count the administrator section.
Are you gonna have external units and have it piped in?
But that's the way those were.
Huh?
They were all individual units.
Yeah, I, I understand that, but I, I don't think it, well, I don't know, you'd have to check the building upon, but I don't know, in the town hall, I don't know if that would be feasible, which is the way it's constructed. I, I'm just saying, you'd have to check what's in there.
And it's, I might have a problem with the historical commission.
We've got a historic building, that could be a different issue, I would say.
I mean, these things only have a hole about you, Dick.
Yeah, well, yeah, normally that, you take an exhaust up usually the same, on, on the same, uh, vent.
Oh, except it doesn't work that way.
No, it's just one hole, one hole.
It's, the coolant, the coolant is pumped from one system to the other from the outset, and, uh, the change, they. There's a way of changing the pressure, which transfers the heat.
That's why they use twenty-two R's that are using twelve R or one thirty-four A, I, I know, yeah, I.
Okay.
I'm not gonna solve that.
Yeah, but it's, it, they're not transferring air back and forth, they're just transferring coolant.
Mm-hmm.
The exhaust is for the hot air transfer, that's why they have exhaust. You're taking the heat from inside and throwing it outside, that unit is throwing the hot air outside, that's what it's for.
No, it's.
Not these mini splits, these mini splits are just.
It's the coolant, it's the coolant that's carrying the heat out.
I understand. But you still have to have a compressor, you still have to have a pump in order to cool whatever, doesn't matter, doesn't matter if it's in a car, if it's a bus or plane.
No, I know.
Okay, can we?
Yeah, okay, okay, we got two more, um. Uh, so the tree warden wants an extra ten thousand in the budget.
What's his budget now?
His current, um, appropriation is thirty-three thousand ninety dollars. Personnel is thirteen thousand two hundred, and expenses are nineteen thousand eight hundred and ninety. I had a conversation with Maurice today, the ten thousand he's looking for is to supplement the expense portion of his budget, not the personnel portion. Um, so that wording should be updated to say expense, um, and his request is to. Um, have additional funding for police details and for the rental of the bucket, bucket truck and crews to do tree work. Um, he anticipates that he will be exhausted of funding, um, by the end of the calendar year.
Yeah, that's barring storms and whatever.
All right, it'd be beginning of next year as opposed to the end of this one, but anyway.
Yeah.
With the rate we're going with storms, he'll probably be busy.
Could be.
Yeah.
Yeah, I certainly don't have any problem with that, that does a good job.
Yeah.
Okay, I agree.
Really does.
And then Article thirty-four is to authorize the Board of Selectmen to appoint parking control officers.
Straightforward, right, it's for the boat ramp and the, just generally for the beach, yeah.
And. Who, who do you have in mind for doing this, is it current employees, or?
We'll have to figure that out, it's really, I think it'd be, rather than us needing to have a cop detail down there to enforce stuff, which is very expensive.
Yeah, true.
If we can have somebody, you know, a lower cost employee, or someone that we designate to do that, I think it would be, save us money overall.
Yeah, have somebody with a form that calls a cop.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, that's what, that's what we're thinking.
And they should generate enough income to more than cover their costs.
Yeah, that, that.
What would the qualifications be?
You're willing to do it.
We do have a job description.
Yeah, yeah, there's job description.
Mm-hmm.
But I mean, hopefully, you know, sure, hopefully it's somebody who really cares about, you know. Cleaning up and actually that, that area and leasing it, you know.
They would be covered by our health insurance, correct?
No, it's a seasonal position.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
Okay, so do we have any other? Questions or anything? I'll entertain a motion.
So I'll make, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, and I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
All in favor?
All right.
I'll second whatever.
Margaret. And, uh, second, all in favor, I oppose.
I think I'm, I'm, I'm good, my six.